Should we bring the meeting? Start with what?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and here is a very body for which it stands, one nation, united at heart and indivisible, one free, open, and just a square.
So I guess they'll call the meeting to order, start out with the word call.
President Hammond.
Here.
Vice President Robert Buehler.
Here.
Councilman John Clark.
Here.
Your ex-brother.
Here.
Rick Jones.
Here.
Fire Chief Harry Minnick.
Here.
Police Chief Marcus Zokowski.
Here.
Park Board President Emily.
Here.
DGA President Matt Bone. Building Commissioner Steve Tom.
Present.
Webmaster Governor Denver.
Warren. That's uh, I think.
I'll see that next to you. Joan.
I already got him most of his money. Attorney Jeffrey Goode.
Present.
And myself.
Here's Doug Dunn.
Attorney. The one that has to do it as well.
Yes, okay.
We'd say we have an overflowing heart today.
Yes, we do.
After one of the questions, it's ridiculous, right?
Yeah.
If everyone has read the minutes, I would make a motion to accept on this. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have four rounds? Bye-bye.
Have a ready-to-do day.
Yeah. Go back to the Jamar tradition of playing for that one Friday. I don't remember if they did not. I don't know. So go on to the April 2019. Michigan Insurance Volunteering Department for Fire Protection, $3,386.33. Michigan Insurance Volunteering Department for Wrench, $105. Long Beach, Town of Long Beach for Police Protection, $4,597. Republic Services, $3,667.20. For the rescue pickup, Shell Oil for fuel, but this for monoliths, A and B, so $110.86. Department of Water, Earth for water for the garage, $9.49. And water for Kincaid Park, $9.29. Brenda Heckman traveling back and forth to the post office in the Bay, $37.70. Amy, which the organization was state for clerk trade and that, we probably do this, $803 for the year. Comcast for the internet, $86.90. Right Flowers and Wives, that was for Memorial Planters for team of 30, $69.99. Or a grand total of $12,882.96. And we just received our half bills while everybody else did. The town has to pay the $3.76 for the ditch, white ditch. They, we had had it for quite a few years, it's back on target this year. So there's 93 parcels and $3.76. Which we will be paying, but it will be shown on here, but I would like to get your approval tonight so we can just go ahead and get it.
How many parcels is it?
93.
93?
And these were all owed by the town?
Yep.
They owed by the town, some of them the county gave us, some of them were purchased and some of them by the grants and some of them were donated. At one time the town did a, like cannabis, so they protracted them, it was on white dish a baby and asked them if they wanted to donate, they got a few parcels from that too.
Okay, that's yours, this is all private, this is all the town, private.
Okay.
Well, still a lot happened with the parks, okay? The private or the?
What do you mean a park? You mean the park loans? No matter if the park loans are not, they're still town responsibility.
Something how all by the town per se, the parking lot?
Some of them are listed as town Michigan insurance slash park department. So the town Michigan insurance is on everyone, but the park department is not listed with everyone.
But those lots may to be parked on the parks.
They were being to be kept for dreams based, for now being in the future. Yeah, there won't be any new stuff there.
But the town still holds them. The town still owns the park.
Oh yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
The park board, the town.
So the deeds, as I explained, says a town Michigan insurance, DAC, park department. Those were purchased with the monies that we got from grants. Because it was specifically stated that that would be for the park department.
But the park department is an agent of the town.
Yeah. And some of the properties that were donated by people, specifically donated to the park of the town ultimately.
I cannot swear that because some of this was done long before I came here. Do you want to come in and go through the 93? Yeah, you can go through the 93 bars, so come on in the office, I'll let you go through. But there's no private ones in there.
No, why?
No private. We're paying for any private individuals, it's all town.
All right, I have moved to approve the accounts payable register for April 2019. Seven.
Hold favorite.
Aye.
And Joan, I make a motion that you are authorized to pay the $3 or whatever they charge.
$76.
Which is less than $300.
Alex, comes up to almost $400.
Well, it's less than $100. $100 times three, so $300.
Oh, I know what it is. It's 376 per.
Okay, well then it is.
Yeah, 376 per installment, there's two installments, just like the regular taxes that we get.
Okay. Bob?
Do we have a second for that?
I thought we did.
Yeah.
This is a motion to.
Pay the taxes.
Have them.
Oh, sorry.
Instead of waiting till the end of the.
I'll second that move.
Okay.
Hello?
Bob, favor?
Aye.
Bob, do you have a report for us?
For dispatch calls, 118, there's 31 walk-ins, Joe, $3, 247. It's $790, 46 hours overtime, 44 hours of training, 254. There's 16. Traffic stops, there's two Michigan insurers, the two written. One ordinance violation, O R. Pretty bad domestic, made an arrest of another man, a drunk child, which is under felony. He also strangled her, which made another felony. He also captured and called the police, which made a misdemeanor. And that's it for the one.
It's pretty exciting. It's a little bit of a road. Steve?
Um, we've had two permits issued since last month's meeting, over on Manawal, if they're doing a kitchen or not, and one over on Bridge Road, which is a window replacement and a general panel interior still.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Steve? No? Okay. Yeah, just gonna go back. Gary?
During the month of March, we spent 212 hours training, meetings, etc., fire calls, medical calls, during the month, we had six fire calls. Three of them were on shady oak, one was on a punt training, and then we had a brush fire on shady oak over here, and then we had a search fire on Lewis 20, which our squad went out to, and squad had to be towed back and towed to the same town in Indiana for a good transmission. The pump broke and took out the torque converter, so we just got it back tonight, so it's back pretty well. We had one medical call up on Blue Ridge, I guess somebody fell up there, and then also our banking chart was made there.
Thank you. Made sure.
Yeah, made there, made there, 7:12.
Thank you, Gary. David, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, we talked about doing, this year we'd like to build a picnic area across from the tennis court there, so we've talked about, a lot of that, get a little bit of money, and they were talking about little classes and maybe pools in the parks that could figure that out.
Oh, cool. That's good, yeah. Great, thank you.
I would like to add, I think everybody noticed, security flowers out there, it was put into the norm by one of our park board members, right, me? We had last year, and coming up now, great.
Stuck my in my boots.
My hair.
I got all my wood in front, you know, there's a lot from this year. I don't know how we got there, I didn't blend.
Bob, do you have anything on the roads for us?
Nothing on the, nobody worked with the street commission or the street department. The grant that you guys designed for was probably the last thing we have to do before we get the community cost on the grid. The exact figures were entered, roughly, it was $109,000, well, it's quoted, and we're receiving from the grant, $85,000, so we left the $25,000 that we have to come up with for the paving project for next year.
Thank you.
Could you tell the work commission in Michigan C to review Highway 20?
It's in the process.
That place is doing.
It's scheduled.
For when?
Sometime this summer, they're supposed to start on this soon, I just started ordering it the other day.
You're doing something on.
You're working on, why you making it during the?
Yeah.
It's gonna be.
Swan Lake, down the.
Better, I was going to go, Highway 12 in the town.
Does it?
Kind of the summer, stay on 20.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a passion.
Yeah, during the day, it's one light in the summer.
Rich, do you have anything to report on the planning commission?
Yep, we met last Tuesday. We finally approved, approved Ron Rogers' books. Books?
Yes.
House plans that we had to have adjusted because it didn't seem right since last month when we came in. So now we have Steve to approve it. The other guy that Joan, I think he came in, has been an outpatient for a permit up over there, the house in the back of Sunset, that guy still hasn't shown up. Two meetings in a row. Steve, do you have anything on that guy?
I contacted the company that's doing the plumbing work, she's doing it back for me, but I've been over there and I haven't caught anybody, but they're definitely doing more than just plumbing work in there.
Oh, it's a huge project. Oh yeah, we're long. Is that our town or sitting in Brooklyn Beach?
I'm assuming it's in our town.
What's the angle of the apron?
Yeah.
Two thirty, Sunset.
That's still on the beach.
How it's actually sits on the beach?
Yes. The apron, still on the beach.
Okay, so it's not an issue for us. Okay. Yeah, it's early, it's early. Here's the booth that we're actually trying to. Third thing we discussed was our building permit we got. Dyna added a couple things that we had talked about, including the swimming pool inspections, and then we changed the final inspection for plumbing, electric, I think you all have a copy of the new permit, and Dyna did a revision to them, and is it always gonna be in red?
If you want, we could leave part of it red, this list will let everybody could see today, you know, at our meeting, you know, the changes that were made, but maybe so far as we would like to have it, but you know.
Like on the last page where it says, no contract signs, it does say on the permit and they signed it, so I don't know why we can't get these people to take those sides. Anyway, the additions are there on the first page, one of the things we want, because this came out with the house, Pat Myerath told us, as a matter of fact, the winner sells their house and they have a permit, they don't just sit there and have a permit, they're gonna have to reapply. But we put in a time limit of when they're supposed to start, and if they haven't started, it can happen. Then on the third page of what we have, you see we added swimming pool inspections, number nine was added, and then the final inspection by the county kind of sums up what we had had in the old permit, which was a final plumbing, final electric, final.
We can't.
But like I said, on the fourth page, you note, the word note at the bottom of the fourth page, it does say, if you got a lot of the signs in here, they want to put it on the house, it is okay.
You better be careful, everybody, because you're advocating that rule, and you're allowed to sign, any sign anywhere. They got their equipment, they have trucks and vehicles installed, they're marked, and here we're just gonna open a can of worms, fuel out, fuel out that guy.
I thought we did ask them.
No, no.
Signs is signs.
Well, that's fine.
Well, I recall that reason, that we had decided on the maximum size of sign in the past.
But I don't see why.
That's the work signs though, that was a different deal altogether.
Why this would be a problem, having them take your signs on, giving them the ticket, because they need the sign, the permit, the owner. Mr. Dunn? Cause you always say, you sign has to be handled individually.
Well, for enforcement purposes, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, well, I know that the concern that you raised is not a concern, the bigger concern that I have is whether or not it conports to the newly passed sign ordinance. And if the newly passed sign ordinance allows temporary signs, then those, those contract signs, if that's what the concern is, seems to me to be permissible under that, that current ordinance.
I don't remember. Well, if that's true, we have a guy down here who's still got advertising for over two years now, a tree service.
This way on the ground?
That whole.
Was the other day one by there?
Been up for over two years.
It was up yesterday.
It was what, up?
Well.
So I don't know, we can call that temporary, it's over two years. The other things that we talked about, or had talked about, Gary came in, the fire department is planning to put a very small addition out there for storage, maybe chairs.
Chairs, staples, new compressor.
So he didn't ask for a permit, and he just wanted to build a stuff. Then we're still trying to find out what's going on with the fence with the stable owner, Steve, was it all a matter of you close? Then you were waiting for Mr. Dunn, I think.
Yeah. It depends on which fence we're talking about, if you're talking about the fence on the north side of the property, then we can probably cite that, but I did ask for a description, perhaps getting photographs. I mean, I mean approximate length as it runs east and west, and then north and south on each side, I'm not sure that it's complete throughout the property, that it's squared off, but it generally appears that way, but we need a description of the distance, its coverage, at least on the north side, east and west. As I've said before, this fence, pardon my geography, on the south side of the property is, is under the jurisdiction of the county, and a couple county engineers ago, we had an offer from them to have that county engineer go before the county commissioners and have them order it to be taken, taken down or set back. Insofar as the corner section is within our jurisdiction, when it is taken down, it has to be moved back and set at a greater angle so that it doesn't obstruct you from any driver that's exiting, whether you regard this as a street or a parking lot.
It is a street.
It is a street, I don't remember if it's Commercial Road or Exchange Road or something.
Didn't wait a long time ago for the owner to move that fence? When was this? Quite a while back, right?
No, they offered to direct that, I don't know that it ever was.
That was.
So to me that you could reasonably expect that if you approach the new county engineer, you might get the same result, you might not, given the political changes that occurred over the years. But the south end is not within our jurisdiction to do anything about, the north end is, and you just need a, we need an accurate legitimate general description to put that into an ordinance violation citation.
Okay, the last thing we discussed, the 3915 Brookside, which is the new house on the corner of Gray Wall and Brookside, right? There is a shed that does not look like it's 10 feet, but it looks like it's less than 10 feet of the back setback. So Steve, you might, and only you had a bolder issue with these people before. So that was our meeting, but Mr. Dunn, you had to look over this superment, or should we go ahead and pass it unless?
I would ask that you have council approve it, and with regard to the statement about the signs, make that subjectively review.
That's been on the permit for years, the part about the signs, it's not even, just that why it's on the earlier permit.
But we just, we just changed, we had a replacement sign with this, we just added. So as a general matter, it appears that it may not be congruent with that new, new provision. But I'm not gonna go through that in the meeting, I'll, I'll do that later. I would ask that the balance we approved, the limitations of the effective date of the permit may also be something that we want to put in a separate ordinance, but we can do that going forward, so long as council has not urged to approve the form itself.
And this is the building permit form? Okay.
Correct. Where's the shed on that property?
I don't know, I didn't. So as the house is on the corner here, it is behind the house to the east, maybe to the east. You know where they have that big starky fence? So it's between the starky fence and the house, over there. So Matt Bone is the one who saw it and then right arrived over there checking out, you know, the second time, first time he didn't even notice it, the second time I saw it.
One question I have about the staples. Are the staples still owned by the same lady?
This party.
Let we go, because we have not seen her around all right. But she was ordered to do something about the fence, she was also supposedly had given us some portion of that little street there, and actually we've got two, two.
Yeah.
Chiboka, and I think it's there.
The town never claimed that, they, they never took the fence down, the fence is in the tent with setback, and it belonged to the town, and they know, we've never touched it.
Why, because we don't, we don't wanna make a big, big, we thought we had an agreement that the owner. Okay.
What? I'm not aware of any particular complaint.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion that the town council will accept this new, the changes on the building permit.
Reputation.
Okay, all those in favor?
Oh, sack please.
I'd sack.
Okay, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yep, yes. Okay. Uh, Rich, do you have anything?
I'd say.
Yeah. Okay. Easy eight. We don't have anybody here to.
None. Okay. The meeting's, uh, for next month, but Matt said that he had not heard anything, and I don't hope everything has shown up. Ray didn't know if anything showed up about the meeting on the office.
If I may.
I don't have anything.
If I may. Uh, I was present at BZ on time, but we never met unless somebody required, requested a variance. You know, if there is no request for variance, there's no reason for the BZ meeting, right?
Well, they have the, they have the, the rules to go by, like, uh, two years ago.
Okay. Okay. The next on the agenda is white ditch.
Okay, the shanna is, the ordinance is not on the list for any kind of discussions, uh, so, uh, nothing to place the meeting with regards to the shanna shores.
Okay.
Today, so that was the news.
Thank you.
Do you remember when they implemented the white ditch assessment back on the tax bill?
I know it's on there now.
No, it's, yeah, this year it's on there.
I don't know, I, I have a.
Yeah, I don't remember anything or reading anything about.
Okay. It, it should be there for a while, because we've had money in the bank, you know, that they use, you know? Every time they're, they go through here, so, but I don't remember when they actually started taking it out. I'll ask that procedure.
Okay. Mr. Gunning, do you have anything?
No.
No?
We haven't asked.
Well, I'm sorry.
Okay. I updated everyone with the dates and any other news this time. I did put in, I added the fire department's camping breakfast on it, and then I also made note of cleanups and that if Tom actually does the cleanup and we publish a data, I don't know if anything was discussed by anyone, and encouraging everybody to, you know, pitch in and help on that, and then, uh, I think that's about it with regards to.
I was gonna subject, uh, suggest, I was gonna suggest that for date of town cleaning.
Oh, a date? Okay.
Because if I'm on a table and usually you knew the town cleaning had been made. So anybody wants to?
Does anybody have a suggestion for a date?
Not before we end yet.
Well, I thought we discussed it last year, and we're not getting a dumpster, we just kinda asked the individuals. There's nowhere to dump the dumpster, and if we do get a cleanup.
Okay.
Cause we agreed not to get a dumpster again.
Okay.
So we have to make arrangements if you're gonna do that.
We kept the old contract with Republic Services, and in Republic Services, there is a dumpster, but we had problems with everybody that went by it and construction people dumping things in it, not what it was for.
That's right.
And we are.
We do say not to get a dumpster again.
Okay.
And if people have large pickups, they can call, put this up, they can call.
And I just wanted to add that if we do have a town cleanup, I said I'm part of the building, take a bag or two home and put it in my bag, I said that's not hurting, you know, so I think the rest of us can do the dumpster job. Ask them to take the trash home and put it in their bags.
Right. Good idea.
Okay.
Good idea.
I was looking after you that, we just set it out there.
Now, since my wife is no longer here, she used to take care of the hot dog, you know?
Someone from the fire department?
Mine? No, I think we did. We didn't.
Okay.
I mean, we did it.
No, she hasn't been in the last few, the last few years.
Well, no, what she said.
No.
She. John was president, so I thought it was just.
Oh, it was like his president. Oh, that could be because, um.
But anybody, my mom's yet to go to bed.
I think I'm, I got a lot of things coming up, they just, they can't.
Yeah, you're too busy, uh, you're too busy.
I'm sorry.
I would suggest that Saturday, eleventh of May, if there's anybody in want.
Maybe, but that's, is it moving back to?
Excuse me.
It's nasty, maybe you have to go to the second. Love it.
Oh, yeah.
And that's long as we have, that's probably a weekend, I don't know if we have.
So the eighteenth? That's decided. Is everybody in favor of that?
Everybody in favor of the eighteenth for the town cleanup?
Anybody who does it, I thank you. I'm free.
Okay.
The first, it's the first. The first.
So.
Eighteenth. Nobody wants the eighteen?
Nobody objects to that date? All right, then I put it down.
Maybe eighteen for the town cleanup?
Eighteenth? How are you gonna drive the pickup truck?
You do?
All right.
What time is starting?
Well, usually we start around nine, right?
Right. Usually it's about nine.
Nine, and we quit at twelve. And had lunch with, and dogs and lots.
Can I cook the dogs? Sure.
Now, in the past, Regina did, uh, did provide, uh, unbelievably, uh, abroad.
Okay.
I understand that I couldn't cook.
Right?
Sir, just pick up.
I couldn't cook.
Okay. Now we'll go to Mr. Gunning for resolutions and ordinances.
Uh, I have, I have none for presentation tonight, as I mentioned probably three or four that could easily be done. Uh, some of them address matters that either we or the townspeople are already required to do under state law, and I think I've mentioned before, for example, the e-verify requirement. Well, contractors who do business with the town, you have a contractor of the town, have to provide certification, um, that they submit their employees' names to the e-verify system for immunization, uh, prevention purposes. And, um, that's something that, um, may escape our active and collective memories from time to time. And so there might be some merit to having these specific ordinance that we can put into code law that, uh, we can refer to from time to time, otherwise we run the risk of, uh, you know, forgetting to pursue that. And, uh, if the, uh, the state begins to audit that particular matter, um, then it may just be worth our while to go and put that into ordinance form. There's several things like that. Another thing would be, uh, the use of the road right-of-way, uh, so the recent instance of the road boring, uh, that is something that is a property right that is owned by the town. So really only the town council has the ability, and some of you who've been around for a while will remember, uh, that AT&T routinely sends in notices asking the city or county engineer, uh, give them approval. Uh, that's because in the, in the packages of rights and ownership rights that the town has, one of those is control over the use of the right-of-way. So even if somebody's going to bore underneath the road, that right requires permissions to express specific permission by the town council, um, and that requires that they do paper vote to approve that. Now, case by case basis, you're gonna get circumstances where depending upon what people are doing, you're going to want them, uh, perhaps to sign a waiver. So the, the most recent example that occurred, um, apparently involved a request for a cable line to be put under the road. They have to have permission from this town council to be able to do that. When that comes before the town council for the vote, then we look at what's happened, and it may be routine, you may say, fine, do it, it may be unusual, and it may be the circumstance where in a situation requires certain rules and considerations. For example, in this, this mess situation, we probably wanna protect the town by saying that you have permission to have that cable line under our road so long as you sign a waiver that holds us harmless. So for example, somebody gets permission to put up a sign, or the, the road commissioner or contractor is going to put up a sign, and they put that sign right through the cable line. Uh, we wanna make sure that they don't sue us in the future, and if it's our own building commissioner or, uh, road commissioner puts the sign in there and cuts off the sign, uh, we wanna eliminate all harmless from that. Uh, we're probably all familiar with the, you know, call the state service before you dig. That's because they wanna check and make sure that the lines, the utility lines in particular, that may spark a fire or an explosion or a problem, uh, like an outage, uh, are prevented. And so we wanna take the same type of charge. Now, that's the type of thing that, that we might just wanna pass ordinance and set forth what the procedure is, and that sort of alerts everybody and reminds everybody. Cause I, I realize that, that last AT&T request has been years ago now, and to my knowledge, that's the only one in town before us. Uh, but I have that sort of activity, uh, on, on a list. I know the conservative municipal law philosophy is fewer regulations and a shorter, smaller rule book or ordinance book is, is better. Uh, and so one line of thought is, you know, don't put all these things into a special ordinance. Uh, but then that requires us to be mindful of that in the future, it's very easy to have a situation that recently occurred, uh, you know, go forward without any realization that that is a right, and that is an obligation by councilmen to actually enforce that. If I can report other things than you now, then you'll have to later. Uh, I'm not sure if the, uh, government has been listed later, uh, but I did wanna report in the ordinance violation case for the, uh, citation issued in four oh two L portal, uh, that has now been rescheduled, it's not rescheduled for a trial, it's merely rescheduled for a status hearing for May thirteenth at one o'clock. That, of course, is the room four case of Michigan City Port Building. The, the other item that I definitely wanted to report on was, uh, you're probably all aware of the, uh, United States Supreme Court declining to take the Gunderson case that involved the lake shore rights of walking along the, the lake shore. Uh, with that action, um, that means that the state's Supreme Court decision that protects the rights of individuals, uh, to use that lakefront, uh, beachfront property, uh, to walk along with a walkie-ease, so to speak, and, uh, perchance to even, uh, sit down along the way. Um, by doing that, they caused the General Assembly to say, oh, we should have a law like most of the other states have. Uh, what has happened with most other states is that their origins and their reasons for having a law is different from ours because of the way the ownership of the property exists. And the land in Lake Michigan is owned by the state in state jurisdiction. In the other states, for example, Illinois, uh, their land ownership is conditioned upon license and patents and other land rights that were given away to the counties or the cities or to individual landowners. So what other states like Illinois have done is they said, uh, we're gonna pass a statewide law that says we have a public trust for the use of those lands, and we're going to have a list in our legislation that says what's allowed. And most states like Illinois just say recreational use. Michigan has a little bit of a different, uh, history, but they have the same type of public trust in place, except there was a lawsuit much like the Gunderson case, but the, uh, the party involved there that wanted the use of the, the lakefront property was just to walk along the lake. So when litigation was over, the state of Michigan has interpreted that all as meaning that every member of the public has that right to walk along the lakefront without fear of being told that they're trespassing or being chased off the land, um, by the owner of the property up to that, that point. If you can remember, the State Department of Natural Resources said, um, we measure that line by the high water mark. And they even have markers planted in the ground in various places along the, the offshore line that tells you where that high water mark is. But in fact, the high water mark is always moving, uh, with, with the trick of, of the waves, um, like a tide, but not like a tide. So with the opportunity that exists, with the General Assembly saying, we should take and pass a law to govern this, there are two competing laws that have come to the fore. Uh, one is, uh, the subject of a letter that was just written by the mayor of Michigan City, saying we're opposed to that version, that Senate Bill five eighty-one. In Senate Bill five eighty-one, it says, we're going to declare this a Lake Michigan shoreline zone, and we're going to give authority for that to the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. And they shall govern it, and they shall not allow, uh, cities and towns and counties that have shore protection structures, whether it be steel, cement walls or brick wrap, are not going to allow municipalities to have any type of jurisdiction over that. So the mayor indicated that that was one of his objections to that particular law, Senate Bill five eighty-one, that gives the power and the control to the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. The other proposal is Senate Bill five five three, and that has been introduced by State Senator Karen County from Ogden Dunes. That is typical of what they have in Michigan and Illinois and the other states, whether it's ocean shorefront or great lake shorefront, in that it declares a recreational use, but does not give the authority and the administration for the shoreline to the Department of Natural Resources. They would have some obligation clearly to enforce that law, uh, but they don't have control and authority over it as in Senate Bill five eighty-one. Uh, my understanding is there's only two weeks left in the meeting of this General Assembly, and, uh, both. and both bills have been passed fully through the Senate and are hung up in the House. But a vote had been assigned to the House Committee on Judiciary, but they have not had any hearings yet beyond the first reading, which was just a formal reading to put it on the calendar. So, my question is going to be, if this town council is inclined to let the state legislature know they favor one over the other, or they perhaps oppose both of those proposed bills, that you might want to take action tonight to express an opinion that they should pass one or the other, or maybe take no action, or express an opinion that they shouldn't adopt either of them. If they don't adopt either, I would expect that both versions or some form are going to be back in the next session of the General Assembly. But I think I would perhaps urge that if you're going to take a stance, if you would ask the state legislature to back, pass the Karen Tavion version, Senate Bill 553, which would just announce that general recreational use, because the issue itself as to the use of that land, whether it has lake water on it or not, that is regarded now by the court decision as being public trust. So, I offered that information, and if someone wants to make a motion that favors one over the other, fine. If you don't want to do anything on it, that's fine as well. But the last thing that I wanted to mention, and I don't, I have to rely on the court treasurer for this, you had, I think, another UMBWA contract that was either pending or may have been approved?
No, it's not been approved. I sent it to you, so you can do it from a little bit.
I don't recall that I had gotten a new one, but they, in fact, use a standard boilerplate contract every time. The last time we had a state board of accounts audit report, there were some adversary findings in the report, and we've addressed many of those, although we haven't addressed all of them. One of the standard state board of accounts audit reports has a section for all cities, towns, counties, and political subdivisions with regard to risk control. And it basically says, the town council is responsible for risk control, and so every one of your actions that you want to take, you must consider the risk that's involved. One of the unique features, in my opinion, about the UMBWA agreement is it has a whole harmless clause that basically says, if the court treasurer or the town council filled off a reservation and starts violating laws or starts taking money, and they don't catch it, they're resolved from any liability for that. Or if they catch it two years later, or a year down the road, or five years down the road, their specific contract language has a whole harmless expression in it. So, the town will hold them harmless. So, if the state says, hey, you should have known, they hold up the contract and deflect it back to us. One of the risk control acts that the town council can take every time UMBWA or somebody else presents a contract like that to you is one of the few things you can do is take out an insurance policy. In this type of instance, you would be taking out an insurance policy for the actions of the court treasurer. We've seen in the past where the town has taken out an insurance policy on the activities of the town attorney and on general liability itself. Now, you have insurance coverage. That speaks to wrongdoing and errors and omissions. But we years ago had a very expensive policy that also was referred to as the linebacker, and had linebacker coverage. So that if the town was sued, whether with the fault of the attorney or with or without the fault of a building commissioner or any other employee, it would provide coverage up to the limits. But with the linebacker, the coverage, it would also provide protection, even if there's outright wrongdoing involved. And the last time we had coverage like that was for the cell tower lawsuit. And that law firm paid all the legal expenses. After that, they said, we won't even offer that until you have a period of three years without similar litigation discussed. So, either way, those types of insurance policies are the types of protections that are available to you. Now, I recall that when the three-year time period was up, we looked at linebacker coverage again, and the premiums were so sky-high, you know, there was a comment to the effect of, well, we're not being able to pay the ordinance for the next twenty years if we get into that type of coverage. And so, it would be the same with risk control on a policy like that for the court treasurer, even though it's more of a limited coverage. So, whenever we make a decision not to have coverage like that, one can refer to it as you're rolling the dice. And in a sense, you're always rolling the dice with every decision that you make. But it would seem to me that this year, like the last many, many years, I would not encourage you to seek out a separate policy and insurance on the errors and omissions of the court treasurer or on the potential or on duty of the court treasurer. So, we're putting a lot of faith in you, which we are anyway, unspoken. But we go a few steps further to protect ourselves by having this conversation. I realize it's been a monologue so far about this particular topic. But theoretically, that finds its way if you're meeting this, that the attorney talks about risk control, and the town possibly seeking out an insurance policy separate to protect the town in the event that the whole harmless in the UMBWA contract is triggered. So, that's my comment. I'll conclude by saying, if there's any discussion on supporting the lake shore legislation, I'll take questions on that. And if you're not interested, that's okay too, whatever the body decides.
Well, I have a question about them. They're on our clause. We just signed a contract with them recently, and they got a considerable amount of interest. They're not going to be responsible for what we did to them, is it?
That's their standard contract. I think my questions with them are the first time any municipal attorney anywhere in the state has raised a question.
Yes. I just want to introduce a new officer. They have a Mitchell Snyder. He's been with the couple months now, and Todd Bullson replaced him. He retired after four years. He's too young. I need to accommodate.
How old is this officer?
Forty years, four months, and four days.
Thank you, Rose. For my time.
Okay. The true harmless.
Oh, wait a minute. I still watch that sort of stuff.
The contract is in the form of a take it or leave it contract. So, you can take it or leave it. It's standard in all our grant contracts, all the federal contracts that we end up, you know, identifying and holding harmless those other entities and agencies. But the state says, you know, all you can do would be to, you know, seek out a special coverage insurance policy, and that's really the only option. Let's think about this information.
Are you done?
I am.
Wait, I have one other thing I want to ask you about. The building program in the bonding of the subcontracts, our responsibility to check in for homeland security.
I'm not sure.
The illegal aliens?
Oh, the e-verify, that's for contractors that provide services to the town.
All right. We're going to initiate the program here to start checking those people. The commonest of me to do that was because they're already registered with the company. If we have to do it ourselves, we're talking a simple amount more work and time involved, which we are, we are called.
Those are people who have contracts with the town. So, if we hire somebody to clear the road right away or do paving, you know, our standard specs for road paving specifically refer to the e-verify.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that when the contractor finishes the job or starts the job, that they come in and they put a e-verify certification in our class.
Well, I misunderstood. I thought we talked about just subcontracts, is it? Houses are working out?
No, no, no.
Okay.
So, okay, I misunderstood this one. I'm going to clear it up. Okay. I was going to add something. I think the street paving is probably the best example of that.
What about water? What about utilities? Gas, electric?
That's basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So, what's next?
Well, wait a minute. Regarding the e-tracks, the bill that the mayor of Michigan City's against, is that something you're suggesting we back? You're saying?
You could oppose that bill just as he has the mayor has opposed, and we could either...
Then what was the other one?
The other one, the Senate Bill 553, and that designates recreational uses that would just continue to recognize the present use, and that is that...
People can walk along the beach.
People can walk along the beach without the owner of the...
We did have an issue in our town. We built a beach of the... We tried a couple of years ago because of Clint Farnes. I was that happened to be down at the beach dock when the charter went crazy. Went crazy with people down there. And he's putting out another, I don't remember what the Bible was called, but I'm willing to back that second, you know, suggestion to vote, to the state support that second. Is that a bill number?
Right. That would be Karen Tavion's bill and then Senate Bill 553. So, are you making a motion?
Well, is that, you guys, so do you think that we...
I'd like to vote by strength of the way it is right now.
Well, that's what you're talking about. Okay, what you need is the second.
I have a second.
Are we making a motion?
Huh?
I guess I made a motion.
Right. So, for clarity, is that to oppose Senate Bill 581 and support Senate Bill 553? Or just one or the other?
All opposed on 581 or 553? The way that the attorney's...
She's got to understand what she's going to write up.
Okay, so I move that we vote in favor of supporting 553 as opposed to 581.
Well, is that getting a motion?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
What's your views?
What can we do about the rocks in our way to the beach now?
I think they're like...
That's terrible.
No, I mean, are the rocks still there?
Oh, they are definitely there.
I got a call...
You can't walk past that house now because there's rocks in the way.
I had a call from Mrs. O'Brien, and she said they have, they were going to get them out there by May first, especially the rocks that are on our beach area.
His footing is under the water by twelve foot now. So, if it keeps it roting, his house will be in the water. His footings are that far up now.
That's his problem, isn't it?
Yep.
He has no right to get to the beach.
Right. And there's no way to get to the beach.
We're supposed to be doing some kind of, of road control on that house for the summer. But the way the property line sits on there, the sub, the boulders have rolled onto public side of the property. They're getting undermined and rolling onto the public property. It's not the little boulders that you were talking about. These are the big Volkswagen boulders. And that's where maybe the town council should write to the council of Michigan, Michigan, that they're expected not, these boulders not to be on the public property, which they plan.
They are supposed to do anything to the beach. They're supposed to get a permit from the EQ. The EQ doesn't even work any equipment down there. If you want to do anything, they want you to hand dig this stuff out.
They're going to have to, if they're bringing in charges?
No, they will have to. Well, that's now they're down there, but I think they have some effort to do that. I think they just want to say you did it.
Well, that's why we have to get more oversight on that there, because the beach is only forty foot wide. If you throw a Volkswagen side boulder, that's ten foot right there, so you're focusing on three foot.
I agree with you. I think we need to do something. That's, I'm going to be in my public, some sort of submission. These are the same people that wouldn't let you walk on the beach in front of their ones before they even had a house built. And I'm going to tell some of our beach residents.
Well, they want to build that as far as they can, keep everybody coming under there. They want to build that.
Yeah, it's a shame that long, long ago, the beach was actually a parcel of dust from Bible where, you know, the Spanish, Long Beach and human beach.
So, as we're talking about the beach right there, I did talk to Rick a couple of weeks ago, and our beach dock is their number one flag. Well, no beach, I don't know. Just go through it. But no beach, I don't think they're gonna go through it.
They should look around the internet, we replaced the stock. It was all alike with all the others. And that's gonna go through. They kept purchased, we moved upstairs, we trapped stairs just to get down. That they would be putting in at thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. So that's, they're already in shit, and now it's out of the door.
Okay, that's good. Any more comments?
What's left of the world? I have comments of the world. Yeah, it could be... Second thing.
We're at the grants, guys.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
Okay, so White Beach, very stabilization. Al Wallace is working with the DNR, and we need RFP proposed. There is an RFP already, which is a request for a proposal, that's been completed, and it's in the works. And we'll be getting free... Look, White Beach, you're hearing word of restoration. So it shouldn't be too long before we know exactly what has to be done in the next grant, or if we find a grant action, do the work.
Okay.
So, okay. And then you're down to communication. Okay, and a request for communication. I have a request for public records, one to merge with the attorney paid for 402 bill for a court case. And I have one with Councilman Alex Rautsa for that to assess the facilities program. Each one of you have a copy of that. Okay, public comments? Anybody else?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Number one, we're gonna schedule a workshop to save on the people in that.
Let's do it tonight.
We chose cleaner on May eighteenth, so that day, we say that.
Just talking about the other money we have, like we reported, the guys that did, made the city, that did one roadside between our border and several of these.
We gotta, we need to start taking care of these dead trees and stuff in our driveway access. And we wanted to discuss it amongst ourselves, with whoever's interested to get this project going. We're already in April, so we're quarter of a year already, so we'd like to try and use this money and get away with this tree stock. So I suggested an invitation for whoever wants to participate and decide how they wanna do this, to speak up.
But we would have already to ask for a bid. We would have to ask for a bid.
We did before. We've done it before.
Yeah.
Boss done a real good job with one of the deals, and that's not the problem. The problem is just deciding how we want to do it. So everybody has a chance to speak about it, okay? Because there's been some controversies about it.
That's okay, so we have to have the E-Verify on the contract? For the trees? We have to have the E-Verify, we get that from the last time.
That's fine, if we have to do it, we'll do it.
I'm just trying to say that they have to buy a certain amount of insurance.
Fine. And then we, we lost, just pick a date.
You want to do it later this month?
As soon as possible, as far as I'm concerned. We can get a lot going on in the deal, and...
Want to do it this month? We can do it later on, like... Which days are better for you?
I'm flexible, I'm... You're flexible.
How about Thursday, the twenty-fifth? May twenty-fifth?
What day?
May twenty-fifth. So you want to meet this evening or in the afternoon?
I'm flexible too, whatever. Uh, T-shirt. Be best to meet.
Okay.
Five o'clock is fine to meet, anytime after five o'clock.
Okay. You want to make it for seventh o'clock, or do you want to do it earlier?
Whatever. What day is that?
Twenty-first. You want to do it.
Thursday. Huh?
Seven.
Seventh o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, what day is it?
Need somebody that knows where these trees are, so we get the right ones. This is, they got a map. They made a map last year. Okay. Tonight, I haven't seen this map, so they got it.
What time is it? Seven o'clock.
We're gonna do it, we need to do it during the day.
John works, you know, so...
It's gonna be a different day. If I can't see there, then somebody can just take notes.
Right. Okay. Good.
And one other thing I want to bring up is the paper I gave you earlier, was assessing voting for whether how successful or unsuccessful it was last year. That's what this paper is about. To see how much money you put in on the progress we issued, to reveal how everything's being handled. So you might want to look at this and remove the site. If there are any changes or anything, or somebody would like to add, if you track something. So that's what this is for, is to be able to go over it, take a look, and see what our program was like last year.
Man, going back to what we were just talking about, either the trees, or if we're gonna have you guys clean it right now, I'm still very dissatisfied with the way, I think it was made the city did that supposedly two sides of roadside, we turned our border from the table. If you guys haven't looked at that, I urge you to go look at it, because it's a problem. Can I finish? My suggestion is that if we're gonna have people do this work, we have to be, you know, spelled out, it has to be checked over.
One way you could create that, allowing problems is to have what they can with RFPs, it's a request for a proposal, which we can do, and spell out what you want done, and then thoughtful by that. He's not being fooled by anything except what he thought was lowest price.
We discussed it. No, no, we discussed this, and I don't push your judgment, because I don't get your judgment.
It's a mess. We paid the guy pretty decent money.
We paid the guy to cut the tree stock, oh, Mark, that's what we paid for.
No.
Hence the hours. No, I'm not. You're out of order. Come on. No, I'm not.
You're interrupting me, maybe you're out of order. You asked me a question, I started explaining.
Well, I'll make one comment, okay? And that right away, you're objecting to the songs in there?
Well, I think you should have got rid of those too.
Well, let me think, this, this, you know, it's meant so. There are gas lines, there are water lines running through that driveway access. This is Bob, this, I dropped it over with his sheet, and he understands what it is. No one knows that we got lots, we got electric, we got cable, we got water and gas.
They have that there.
There's thousands of them that are three foot high still that have been hacked. They couldn't come to the ground. They're that high. There's gonna be four to five of them there. There is all kinds of wood still on the easel, there's buried in drum work. There's a huge other note tree that has come down imminently that was in that area.
That's on private property. It's over ten foot off the road.
It's our property, it's village property.
It's over ten foot off the road. And my suggestion, because if you haven't seen that, then you need to take a look. This is what we've done, it's very good. I know you've seen it.
Well, all the battle pretty much is a mess as you really want it. The battle, that's we're trying to get some kind of program going, so we can start cleaning this up.
This was paid to be done.
I misunderstood, because I'm telling you, all those bait and dogs, cut the trees down all out of it.
They, they all those big sumps out. They didn't pull the trees. And I also said we need to spell it out.
Well, I want to have a workshop, so we can sit down and discuss it.
You take care of that one, please. And while you're coming to the workshop, can I make a suggestion that we all write down what completely needs to be done? Each one of you have a list of what needs to be done.
Right.
That's why then you can prepare your notes and... Right. Some conclusions of what you want to request for a proposal. Right now, to the insurance, E-Verify, all this other stuff that needs to be done.
It's ordered, and they get that, and writing exactly what has to be done, and then so. And if it's not done, they deserve it. And they don't get paid.
Correct. You've got something to go by.
I think we had to...
I have one last thing, if you'd be willing to adjourn, in the comments, the communications. I have a card, thank you card, that came from Richard Husky's daughter, Amy, she's in the behalf of Husky family. Their gratitude for their expression of sympathy and all the flowers. Okay, does anybody else have anything else to add? Nothing?
None.
Meeting adjourned.
Last year, four thirty.